All right, I call the order of the October 22nd in the Tolland Town Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in moment of silence. My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to say amen.
Me too.
All right. Four proclamations and presentations. We're five.
We do have some.
We do have a proclamation of presentations. At this time, I'd like to invite Representative Tim Eckert to come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, and I apologize, but both my colleagues have conflicts this evening. Representative Wilson Phineas is accepting an award on behalf of wonderful organizations. And Dan Champagne had another conflict, so I'm not, wasn't aware of. And so on behalf of the three of us, I have a couple of proclamations for the people that are here tonight, so that are retiring. So I always like that part of retiring because my financial planner says I'm never gonna be able to retire.
You gotta find something to retire from.
I guess if it's appropriate, William, David, and I believe Paul are the three that I have for this evening. However, you would like to do that, but I'll read each one of them, if that's okay. So William. Then Connecticut General Assembly Official Citation Introduced by Representative Pat Wilson Phineas, 53rd District, Representative Tim Eckert, 8th District, and Senator Dan Champagne, 35th District. Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincere congratulations to William and Eccles in recognition of serving on the town council for the past six years as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission for two years. Thank you for your service, best wishes in all your future endeavors. Entire membership wishes extends its very best wishes with this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Given this 22nd day of October 2019 at the state Capitol, Houghton, Connecticut, signed by President Pro temp Martin Looney, Speaker of the House Joe Aron Simwitz, and Secretary of State Denise Merrill.
The largest piece of paper.
This can be an octagon.
That's who he is, is my last name.
Oh, yeah, right? It's a challenge.
Connecticut General Assembly Official Citation Introduced by the same three people. Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincere congratulations to Paul Jane Reynolds in recognition of serving on the Tolland Town Council for the past two years. Thank you for your service, best wishes in your future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Also signed by President Pro temp Martin Looney, Speaker of the House Joe Aron Simwitz, and Denise, Secretary Denise Merrill. Thank you, Paul. And David, if I mess up your. And as a teacher for continuing education, I tried my best the last thing. So I'll give my best, though, okay? And also State of Connecticut General Official Citation Introduced by the same three people. Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincere congratulations. Do you take it, Scholes Select?
Yes.
In recognition of serving the town council for the past four years. Thank you for your service, best wishes in your future endeavors. Entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Signed by President Pro temp Martin Looney, Speaker of the House George Simwitz, and Secretary of State Denise Merrill. Thank you, David. On behalf of the three of us, Pat, myself, and Dan, you know, one of the things that you all are giving of yourself is the most precious things that we all give, that we all, that we can give, and that is time. So thank you for all that you do and giving of the time that you do for this community. And we hope, and I hope, that you continue your service someplace, whether it's here in Tolland or wherever your future lies, because you know, service to the community is the best thing that we all can do and in some way, you know, make a difference in lives of others. So thank you for every one of your efforts and what you've been doing, so, and have a great night. Thank you.
Can we get a photo? If we can get some photos, if any of you would like to come around to the front. And then we'll do a group of maybe some individuals. I like playing the, what is it called, the cruise director here.
You're too rushed to move over.
Thank you.
He's fine.
Yeah.
Long time I wanna do it.
Do family, watch Do Family first.
Yes. I didn't see him. It's mine, you get to do it.
I'm gonna be great blush. Barriers, yes, barriers. Make sure you read this out.
It takes a little blur there.
So we'll zoom in on it.
Brenda, thank you so much for putting this together, it's very nice.
Just a little bit help with that. With your phone?
Absolutely.
Stand in the middle, stand in the middle.
Hey.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Big Tim.
Representative Pat sent me a text that says she'd like to recognize all your hard work and dedication. Your work's been very important to the community for, and has, will continue to be important to the community for many years. She appreciates your energy and dedication, just like everybody else does. You've set an example that all of our citizens should follow, involvement, because involvement matters. Thank you.
Thank her for that. And it's probably, at this point, very apropos that we recognize you have one more retirement tonight. The large bundle of flowers over there says something about who it is. Michelle, has been, how long have you been doing this with us? Ten and a half years. So you've sat through more council meetings than anybody else in our. I'm so sorry.
So you're our new resident expert, you're no longer a employee.
Yeah, so thank you so very much for doing such a wonderful job with the minutes and for putting up with the crazy town council that Tolland occasionally has.
Thank you.
Mike, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to say we're gonna miss her terribly, and I, you know, she's been here ten and a half years, and I don't think I've ever, she's ever called out sick or not been here. She's the most reliable of clerks, and she's done a great job. She'll be very much missed, so we're very sad, but we're happy for her next stage of not having come.
At least clap for me. Alrighty. Item five, public petitions, communications, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. Please come forward with a microphone, state your name, and speak clearly on the microphones that everybody at home can hear you.
Hello, I'm Philip Doolitle. You've probably seen some of my emails, and I wanted to read the email that I just sent. If I can squeeze it into two minutes. "We all want to provide a future for our children, that is why we provide schools. As a society, however, we are doing a poor job in the long term by allowing global warming to continue. Science has conclusively shown that if we do not act, our economy and perhaps our civilization, and perhaps our species itself will be wiped out. At our current rate of burning fossil fuels, the atmospheric concentration of CO2 that will result in about a 1.5 degree C of temperature rise above pre-industrial levels will be passed in just 11 years. To prevent this, we must reduce fossil fuel use to zero, or close to zero, over the next 22 years. By then, all of our buildings must be heated by biomass or heat pumps powered by renewable sources, and all of our transportation must be electrically powered. It would be a huge waste of taxpayer money to heat the new Birch Grove school with fossil fuels and then have to convert the heat pumps in a few years. For minimum operating costs and to meet the long-term state mandate to consider those operating costs in state projects, the best approach would be ground-sourced heat pumps, the technology used at TMS, TIS, and the town hall building. At a minimum, reversible air conditioners should be considered. They only cost 10% more than conventional air conditioners of the same capacity and provide about half of the building's heat from an air source in our climate." Not all models, not all manufacturers can do that, but some of them can. "If there is an intent to reuse the old furnaces from the existing BG building, in the new building, these could be used as backup and as primary heat source until ground source wells could be drilled in the future. In a similar manner, electric cars, pickup trucks, and school buses show lower operating and maintenance costs compared to their fossil fuel-powered versions and should be a prime consideration for future purchases and leases. Please feel free to contact me for more information or references. Dealing with climate change is not a distant problem to be left in the hands of policymakers at the federal or international level. Uncomfortable as it is, we have to realize that this problem is upon us now and that we have the ability and the responsibility to take necessary steps even at the local government level. I'm not sure how we can do it, but these same arguments apply to residences and individuals also. However, our job here is for the town buildings. If you have any questions, you can feel free to contact me. Also, anybody that has specific arguments against global warming, just go to realclimate.org, excuse me, skepticalscience.com. And if you wanna see the raw data that scientists have collected or communicate with scientists, go to realclimate.org. And if you've seen the magazine article that makes fun of global warming, you can go to climatefeedback.org, and they will usually, sometimes have gotten around to having a group of scientists pick it apart and show where all the fallacies are. Thank you very much, I have, I have two copies here. If anybody wants printed copy.
We'll put one of those into the.
I already printed it because of this correspondence. So thank you.
We've got it.
It'll be in the notes.
Yep, we did, yeah. And so two members of the Birch Grove Building Committee, you're here and you heard it, so thank you. Anybody else? All right. No public hearing items, reports of boards and committees responsible to council. Katie, is your presence indicative? Yes, okay, great, thank you.
Sure. So Katie Murray, I am Chair of the Birch Grove Building Committee, and I just wanted to come and give you guys one last update. For those of you who are retiring, congratulations. We didn't actually meet last week, but things seem to be still on schedule, which is where we want them to be. Our last meeting, Costa from the state, the really long acronym. Anyway, he's from the state, and he's writing all the checks. He came, and we defined the date that the town will get keys to the building, so the town should get keys to the building on the 23rd of August 2021, if I'm remembering that absolutely correctly. So that's the date we're kind of working backwards from to make sure that there's enough time for the teachers to get in and unpack before the first day of school for the 21, 22 school year. The abatement has already begun in the existing building. That's the first step in demolition. And the contractor has been given the keys to the old building at this point, so the town is completely out of the building. There have been a number of items that have been, the word they're using is salvaged. What they're really doing is repurposing a lot of existing items within the school. So town departments kind of went on a little bit of a goodie tour, right? And they went through the building and decided what could be used in different buildings in town because a new school construction or school construction requires a 20-year guarantee on things. Most things won't come back into the existing Birch Grove building, but things are being moved to other facilities. You know, basketball courts are going to the rec center or basketball hoops, I guess. You know, they're reclaiming a lot of different items. And there are just a very small number of items that are built in that the contractor has been tasked with salvaging as well. Just some things on the wall. But other than that, they're supposed to begin demolition on November 1st. And much to my seven-year-old chagrin, no explosives, no ragging ball. It's gonna be super radioactive, but you know, they're still gonna take the building down. We're talking, in our next meeting, next week, we are gonna talk about a groundbreaking ceremony that we'd like to do before it gets really, really cold. So we're thinking about sometime in November to do a small groundbreaking ceremony just to sort of celebrate the fact that, you know, we have these portals that are up, our kids are in a safe environment to learn, and we are moving forward with replacing the school, which we're trying to do a positive spin on this and keep everybody positive, do a little bit of celebration of the fact that the state really came through on an 89% reimbursement rate for the building. So you'll all be getting invitations to groundbreaking, I know it's really exciting. The contractor has promised to let us borrow, we do him back, but let us borrow hard hats, and they're gonna, I think, paint some shovels gold for us. It's gonna be really low budget, like no budget, but I think it'll still be fun. And they, somebody also suggested, I think the architect said that in the past they've had groundbreakings for elementary schools where they actually involve some of the kids, so we're gonna have a space where the kids could actually put their shovels into the ground too, just to kind of keep everybody engaged. But other than that, we're doing our, you know, doing our part to keep everything on track.
Great.
Any questions for me? Any need to say back? I did get Mr. Doolitle's email, so that's gonna go out to the architect because the architect is planning for the heat systems in the building, so that will be addressed by the architect so that we just have an idea of, you know, what our options are when it comes to all different mechanisms.
And that's the question that I was just gonna ask, is that really the construction is being dictated by the Office of School Construction Grants Review Director DiMantis.
Yeah, that's the big, long name.
So addressing Mr. Doolitle's concerns, that that was something that really, they're dictating how, to a great extent, what we can do within the, within the school, because they're the ones that are providing the grant, and they're, you know, we have some say as far as how it's designed, but the man, the, most of it is dictated by that office. Is that about accurate?
Not necessarily. I mean, we as a building committee are guiding and directing the architect decisions as they come through. We have asked for different options at times, you know. Our building committee is incredibly knowledgeable about a variety of different things, so we certainly have some people on the building committee who've asked questions about, you know, the heating systems already. We'll get into some more of the energy efficiency, but most of our guidelines and what's really constricting our decisions are building code requirements, requirements for a school, right? Like those are on top of building code requirements. And then there's efficiency requirements for new, for new state buildings or buildings with state funding, so we have to meet certain efficiency requirements. There's gonna be safety requirements that we have to meet. And then the other thing that we come up against is our budget. We are all very aware that we have $46 million, and that is our absolute maximum, that it is not going over that price. So we are balancing decisions based on cost. The main budget for this project was outlined for us based on square footage by the state. So because we're in an emergency situation, we didn't have the time to design first and then find out what the cost would be for this design, and then put it out to bid, and then go forward with it. We're sort of doing all these things simultaneously. So a lot of the budget lines are estimates from the state based on square footage. So we are, the biggest thing we're coming up against, and I think off the top of my head, my first question about geothermal or any other alternative-type heating sources is going to be, how does that fit into what we budgeted for HSHAC?
And just wanna say thank you for all the work that you're doing on it.
Yeah, it's fun, most of the time, yeah.
Katie, um, if we have any kind of suggestions or anything, who should, how should we send them to? Should we send them through the town manager?
You certainly can, absolutely. You can send them to me or to Bev Belli, who's the staff person who's from the town office that's on the building committee. Any, either of, any of those things will work to get the communication out to the whole community. Committee, sorry.
Okay.
But yeah, and we also have public comment, a public comment point at every one of our meetings as well. So, you know, if you really were up for another meeting and you wanted a very exciting one, come on down to the building they need.
I'm just, something that's been kind of weighing on me is I, I think that I'd like to understand the difference in cost between what we have budgeted in for the large, the very large septic and ongoing maintenance that we need for that, and what it would cost us instead to run sewer to the school, because it would serve multiple purposes. One, it would be better for Birch Grove, and two, it would also open up all of Anthony for additional sewer customers, which would help reduce our cost overall.
Sure.
So maybe those schools are on sewers, so.
Yeah, I definitely think that would be something we'd love to talk about. I do know that Costa's kind of drilled into our head that the state doesn't even consider reimbursing anything outside of the property line. So any sewer line that goes up is going to be a town-funded item, but it certainly would impact plans for sewer at that site. And the other part that I would say is that we are moving fast. We are gonna have full construction plans, which is the last stage, from what I understand, of architectural plans. We're gonna have those completed by January. So, you know, if we're talking about a change, like, which is probably a pretty drastic change in the planning of this project, it's gotta be moving very, very quickly.
I'll send an email.
Awesome, thank you.
This probably conversation started with Mike Rosen, too, because it would be a decision from the council to fund.
Right. I mentioned something to him about that, and I agree. I think it's something that, you know, the next council, if we could look at the cost that it would be to extend that sewer line up to the school, because even if the, if the state only pays for the stuff that's on the site, then that would, that would be the hookup. And that would also eliminate some of the cost for the project, because you wouldn't have that super large septic and all the maintenance, everything with that. But it would open us up to hire all of Anthony and all that for our sewer, which would benefit the customers overall and also increase our usage, so.
Agreed.
Absolutely, yeah.
Anything else?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you. And I will be back for a meeting in November with the new council as well, just to introduce myself and answer any questions. Come on, thank you.
I think you have a question.
No, there's another public participation section at the end of the meeting at this point, and you're absolutely free to comment on anything to the Birch Grove Building Committee. I think that would be appropriate. Thank you. Um, let's see here, reports, town council liaisons. All right, good, lucky you.
Nothing.
All nothing for you? All right. And I didn't have anything to that.
I did go to WPCA meeting last Tuesday. Ross Grassis, who is the director of WPCA, and Vernon was there. He gave us an update on the water treatment plant. They had a grand opening, and he said they had good attendance at that. And then there's a draft debt schedule that was sent to the town, and forthcoming, the final debt schedule will be forthcoming soon. We don't have that yet, though, we have, we do have the draft. And the first payment will be due next July for fiscal 2021. And as for the upgrade to the water treatment plant, switching from carbon to a more traditional process, he explained, and that will happen in September of 2021. And then on the town side, our pumps have been rebuilt, and we may need a backup that they suggested. It might be a good idea to have a backup at some point. So that's on the radar screen. The car wash is moving forward, making sure there's no runoff. And then they did speak a little bit about fog, which I learned is fat oil and grease. If it gets into our systems, it plays havoc to the pumping system. So the suggestion was we have somebody that would take on that responsibility to ensure that restaurants and any other places that may produce grease or fats, that they're properly handling that and that's not being put into the sewer system. There's nobody doing that now, so they're gonna try to find somebody that may take on that responsibility.
The health district, do you have inspection?
Fog, yeah, they do. I know they keep track of, it's funny, because I just, we were just talking about fog. I wrote it down, I was like, fog, I want a piece of it. Yeah, they, I think that will end up, some inspections will go through the Eastern Health District.
Don't have that on, it's a part of a fee-based?
Yeah, well, I believe it is, it's part of the permitting process, and then when they do inspections going forward, you know, there's fees and all that, so.
So my understanding from that meeting was that that has not been done for quite a while.
I'm on John's page here, too. I think it's been done for many, many years. It is part of the permitting process, but I think that's, you know, when they haven't installed a trap, but I don't think there's any regular inspection required.
I can find out, I can ask.
They'll have to do periodic inspections, like their licenses.
They do, but it's not licensed.
Traps, they did that. Is a question that. It's not, not in the town, but could be, yeah, the health district. I don't know. All right, so we're gonna find out, instead of debating. Because we don't, we don't know. We can sit here and hypothesize all night long. Anybody wanna do that? Let's do that.
That's not gonna.
Anybody a filibuster, anybody?
No.
You sound like, too, you sound like you wanna go home. Sorry, anything else?
That's it for me.
That's you, good, all right, thank you.
So I had a few things. I had a meeting with the Eastern Health District. There were some talk about the EEE risk. I guess a lot of superintendents are getting a little fidgety with having to delay their games and stuff like that with the EEE risk. But we have multiple traps around us that have been shown to have mosquitoes with EEE in it. Right here in Tolland, we had one, Wellington, Manchester, Hampton, Wyndham. All of those traps have had mosquitoes in it that tested positive for EEE. We've had one equine death, and we had a big pool of them also in South Windsor. We also had a death that East had them directly towards it. So they're putting off releasing, like, going easier on the restrictions until we have the first good solid frost, and they can be more assured that the mosquitoes are dead because it's a, it's definitely something that's still lingering.
Are the first symptoms cold-like in the winter?
They progress really quickly, so I think I'm past that point. They, I think they're probably safe, too. Just in case. We did have actually a really good, pretty lengthy conversation about the wells and which information is public information, et cetera, and all the different task force. There's a task force right now that is being compiled, that is DHP, DOT, the local health, Eastern Health District, DEEP, it's the alphabet soup there. They're just starting to meet to really look at the concentrations of well contaminant, possible contaminations. And the issue has grown exponentially over the last five years. You know, we have quite a few ones here in Tolland that are being tested and sending their results to Eastern Highland and all of that. So we talked about the wells a bit. Dr. Dardick said that the high-dose flu vaccinations for seniors are already running out, but they're gonna start their campaign for everybody to get their flu shots. And they're still having issues keeping the over, the 50 and over shingles vaccine in. It's going like hotcakes, but it's having a hard time keeping it there. So if you get 50 and you need to go, try and find a place that has them. And then there was a lot of talk about the CDC and researching the vaping, the lung injury there is. There's not a lot of conclusive evidence as to what's causing it or how to combat it, but they're just really kind of dipping in on that. From a recreation perspective. Um, from a recreation perspective, I don't have all of my notes with me, but the biggest thing is, is, um, the basketball, the, the winter basketball programs, we have to change because we don't have Birch Grove available. Um, and there's another school for some reason that we don't have available. So they're moving all of the, uh, basketball games to TIS and I believe TMS. Um, so that's a, a change for people who have enlisted their kids in the, the basketball program. The, um, the direct department has been communicating that though, um, so hopefully we can keep that going and people know where it is. Uh, the Board of Ed had a budget workshop and it was their first one. It was the meet with the admins. Um, and then the high school, actually, if anybody wasn't there, but on the twelfth, they had the town council debate and it was extremely well put together. I was very, I was very happy with how, uh, the kids handled it, the questions that they asked. They were very professional. Um, they did a great job of not asking leading pointed questions. They, you know, left it over to interpretation. They kept timing great. Um, they did a good job from AD all the way down to the people who were moderating and the people that assisted. I thought it was really well done and I hope it's something that they can carry on.
How was attendance?
Uh, there were about, at one point, I think Dom told me that I think there were over a hundred people there. Well, I, I know when, I tried to not look at everybody. I was answering all my questions directly to the kids, but at one point I kind of stopped and sat back and I just did like a, my muscle looked really stupid up there because I was like, going like this, you know. I think I got to about sixty-eight, but that was towards the end. And she said that, um, some people had left early. She did a quick count. They made a hundred and fifty brochures and I think they had, um, they had less than fifty left from what was handed out. So, um, they had, I think it was a pretty good turnout. I guess I wasn't really like trying to make too much out there, but, um, it was really well put together. I was very, I was very happy with it. And that's it for me.
And Tammy, Brenda?
So, um, I'm gonna update the triple E stuff. There was an email from the, um, Connecticut Agricultural. There's a, there's an update and it says despite not experiencing a hard frost and daytime temperatures of only around six degrees, um, both the Connecticut Agricultural, uh, experiment stations and the DPH are of the opinion that, um, surveillance data suggests that there is an extremely low risk of anybody acquiring triple E at this time. In fact, they think that it's, at this point, it's almost zero. Um, so with this updated guidance, people can start considering if they want to start relaxing the dusk time restrictions over outdoor activities. Um, but it's just, it's up to us. It's, um, reasonable to start considering, they said. So, that's a little update that just came out yesterday. Um, I also attended the Board of Ed meeting, um, the budget. This is one of those times where you can actually sit down with, um, the admins from many of the schools, from the IT departments, from pupil services, um, to the superintendent, to anybody else at sports. Um, there's a couple other groups.
Pupil services.
Yeah, pupil services. Um, a lot of information was shared. Um, I always ask them, you know, if you could tell the public one thing, um, what would that one thing be? You know, let's start getting rid of rumors. Um, it is very apparent that every single, um, group in our school systems is understaffed, but that they are super dedicated to this town and to, um, our, our young scholars and our community. Um, they're doing an exceptional job with, um, what they've been handed to provide our students with excellent, um, education systems. And that's, you know, one of our investments in our town is our excellent education system. Um, I, it's, it was so exciting to talk to them and find out all the strides that they're making, uh, all the positive strides that they're making. Um, so if you, if you get the chance to go do another one of these, I would suggest you do so because it's, it just is open book, whatever you wanna ask, um, and they give you information. So it's one of, I always try to make it to this one this year. There's three or four coming up. Yeah, um, coming up, so, um, great opportunity for everybody to go and learn. Um, for planning and zoning, they did not have a meeting because of the holiday. Their next meeting is on Monday and the agenda has not yet been posted. So, um, just take a look at the agenda when it gets posted this week and you'll know what we're covering Monday. That's it.
Thank you. Karen, anything to add?
Sure. Um, the next budget workshop is November twentieth, seven PM, also in the public library. Um, uh, and thank you Brenda and Tammy for coming to the last one. Um, I'm glad that some members were able to make it. Um, there are other candidates that came, which was great, and a few members from the community. Um, and I just wanted to say, um, thank you to all of you for your service. Those of you that are retiring, um, thank you for your years of service doing this for the community. And good luck to you that are running again. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Good luck to you too.
Yeah. We got everybody? Item eight point one, appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. Yes, we have several. We have a, uh, for the Board of Assessment Appeals, Jan Rovino, two ninety-six Wigold Road for term eleven, six nineteen to eleven, three, twenty-twenty-one. Karen DiBaldo of one ninety-four A Anderson Road for term eleven, six nineteen to eleven, eight, twenty-three. The Agricultural Commission, Stephen Bassett of two ninety-six Wigold Road for term seven nine nineteen, seven nine twenty-two. Sherry Sullivan, twenty-seven Allen Drive for term seven nine nineteen, seven nine twenty-two. And reappointments to the Board of Assessment Appeals, Rick Field, one thirty-nine Torrey Road, term eleven, six nineteen to eleven, three, twenty-one. And for Town Story, Peter Palmer, four twelve Hunter Road, term eleven, six nineteen to eleven, three, twenty-one. And we have, um, a resignation letter from Peter Palmer, Citation Officer, finding his own effective ten thirty-one nineteen. Make motion, we accept the appointments or accept that slate as presented.
Second.
There is one more resignation letter, also from Peter Palmer for the, um, Citation Area Officer.
Oh, I thought it was like a typo, yeah. There's two resignation letters, one as Citation Officer, one finding his own one inlet weapons for the same effective date, ten thirty-one nineteen.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those are paper. All those are papers. Any abstentions? That's unanimously, thank you. We have no old business. Report to the town manager?
Uh, a couple things about the FOG issue. I think, um, I'll double check, but I, I think as far as inspection goes, I think we have, we actually have a FOG ordinance and there may not be inspections under that ordinance. The EHD might do periodic inspections, but I'll check this, what issue might be that John brought up. Cause we have our own FOG ordinance, I think, but I don't know if there's actually an inspection. So that might be the difference, so, um. And like Dave said, if you have any issues about Birch Grove, best to put it through Mike, um, so he can coordinate or get information, um, so he can get that back. And, uh, and we did get the information about the triple E, so, um, going forward, we're probably gonna ease the restrictions on after five-thirty use coming up because there's not that much use anyways, so, at this time of year, so. But that's good news that it's close to zero, which is good, so.
Football games, a couple soccer games, a couple Nike games coming up.
It's not that much of, of the use anyways at this point in the year, so. Um, and as you know, Mike's in Asheville, so hopefully he's having some good barbecue or something right about now, so.
I sent them like twelve recommendations of where to go.
That's good.
Hooked them up. Peaches.
And I just wanted to also say thank you to everyone for serving. We appreciate it as staff to have people that we can help guide us and, uh, appreciate working with everyone and we, uh, wish everybody luck in the future.
Thanks, Mike. Please, please let the staff know that we could not do this. I mean, we would be a head without a body. And it takes the, the staff, the Board of Education and the, and the town to make this place tick, so thank you. Alrighty, item eleven, adoption of minutes from the October eighth, right, the two thousand and nineteen regular meeting.
Will we adopt the October eighth, twenty nineteen regular meeting that is as presented?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those are paper? I, I, the abstentions, wait, what? Any, any, nevermind. You all said aye. I can't think of any of those other things. Uh, item twelve, correspondence to council.
Yes, um, besides the email that we had received from, um, Mr. Julie, we received an email from Leanne Fritsch concerning, um, testing on her well. And we received an email from Steve Jones, um, to Dave, Bill and Paul. Um, he realizes that this is your last meeting and he thanks you for your service. I think you all got those emails. And that is all that I've received to the entire council.
And I got one on paper from Dairy Farms saying that they are, uh, extending the closing, uh, to the early November. It's, it's still a closing, unfortunately. Correspondents and chairmen's report, communications and petitions from council persons.
I petition you all to go off and have a great time now that you're not having to come here every other Tuesday for the foreseeable future.
Second that motion, thank you.
I'd like to remind you that there are still openings on some of our boards and committees.
Yes, there are. Take those for everybody else out there too.
And I hope that for those of us that are lucky enough to get reelected again, you will all, always be, um, points of reference in history for us.
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to say too, that as a new person on the council two years ago, I didn't realize how much goes into running even a small town like this. I was blown away by how much, uh, happens in this building and beyond. And for Dave, Bill and Paul, I, I did learn a lot from you guys over the past two years, some of which was useful. So I say thank you to you guys. I appreciate it.
And I'm definitely in favor of a, uh, of a post-November fifth drink.
Absolutely. Put that on the calendar when we can do it for them and not do it.
Exactly, right, and then we yield it.
There, there is a request that I have and I know it's sort of, it'll be for the next, the next town council to address. But if we get in on the, uh, for the new business, uh, for the next meeting after the elections, uh, is to address, uh, some of the issues regarding the Kremlin foundations and some of the actions that we may need, may need to take, um, for advocating, uh, to the state legislature as well as considering other options. Having gone to the, uh, symposium on Kremlin foundations a few weeks ago, with the money that's running out from the state, that we're facing a significant issue. And I think that's something that needs to be addressed, that we need to discuss as a town council and possibly open it up for town, uh, for community comment on it. But again, that's not for, that's for the new board, but I just wanted to make that request so that we could have that added on as potentially a new, uh, new item. You got it?
He's got it.
Cool. Thank you.
Everybody, anything else? All right. Item fifteen, public list of participation on any subject within jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit, fifty percent.
Well, I had, I had one question. Um, if the, uh, if, if there, if we do come up with something that saves the town money in the long run, and if the town is able to scrape up the money to implement this, can that add to the school budget?
Can't, no.
That, that was set by the state limit as far as the forty-three million dollars.
So the town can't contribute any additional funds to that, to that total then.
Well, I, do you mean like if, like if we did the sewer thing? That wouldn't go against the, the referendum or the loan amount, but the town would have to fund the portion of that.
No, I'm, I'm.
Well, for, for instance, the extra ten percent for reversible air conditions. You know, if that comes through another million dollars and if the state doesn't wanna pay it, can't the town decide to pay it because it will save, you know, so many million dollars down the road in fuel costs?
Um, I'm gonna defer that question to the Birch Grove Building Committee and let you talk to Costa.
Diamantis.
Diamantis about that perhaps?
Yeah, my understanding is that, um, any changes to the, um, overall project budget, if it goes up, would have to go back to town referendum.
You can't just tack something on and only vote on the added.
Well, it's, so in any case, that requires a referendum. And if, and if we're actually thinking a referendum is required and the plans are gonna be finalized in January, you can't have a referendum. There's basically no time to do it. So, I, I mean, there, another way of looking at it is there's a whole bunch of equipment that's gonna be put on site for free, that if we felt like we wanted to replace at our cost, we could later on. So that's another way of looking at it. I mean, that's what we did with the geothermal up right here.
Though there was so much else wrong in this building that I was told that was only, uh, three hundred to five hundred thousand more to get the geothermal because the alternative was not provided because we would have to pay for the furnaces instead. Cause the furnaces were too old. Now, in this case, if they're reusing old furn-, you know, the existing furnaces, it's harder for me to argue that. Okay, so I'll get with Katie now, thank you.
Okay, let's go. George, wouldn't be complete.
Well, I'm saving all my hours for, uh, next month.
George, for George. I know we can start this way.
But I, I just wanted to come and say thanks. I appreciate what you do. It's not something I can do. I don't have the patience for that. I tell people I really think instead of being nice, so. I just wanted to thank each one of you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, George. Any further public participation?
Really?
Hi, Katie.
Hi, David.
How are you?
Fine. Let me try this, fifty-three door run. I just wanna echo the one people have said. Thank each and every one of you that are reading. I know this has been hard because it's not easy. People can sit back and think it's easy, but when you actually do it, it's hard. So thank you for your service, wish you the best. I hope you stay connected to the community. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? One once? One twice, right, okay. All right, that leaves us with item sixteen, that motion?
To George. Motion to George.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions, is y'all saying?
No.
All right, let's go.
You can't, we're in charge.